Good afternoon, folks. You notice the music's been turned off. And we have our quorum. Number 100 just showed up. So I'd like to call our town meeting to order. If everyone in attendance would come in and take a seat. It'd make it a little easier to keep, see what's going on in here. Let me see, the first thing would be to rise for a pledge of allegiance. We have a flag, yes. And I'm gonna ask our most recently elected selectman, where's he hiding? There he is. Mike. Come lead the, uh, okay, lead the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, one thing I will mention, for those of you who may need a restroom break, there are porta-johns located outside the building here. Oh, this time I'd like to, anyone here attending their very first Mansfield Town Meeting, please stand. And please, don't let this be your last one. Going down my list here, I've got motions, warrants, slides. Okay, usually I have a list of, oh, here it is. This is a list of non-resident persons who may be called upon to speak today, and they can only speak with your permission. So I will read the list and then call for motion to allow them all to speak. We have Kevin Dumas, our town manager. Barry Lacass, the Assistant Town Manager and Finance Director. Lee Azanera, the DPW Director. Rick Alves, the Assistant DPW Director and Town Engineer. Kurt Gaffney, our Water Operations Manager. Dan Brogie, the Chief Assessor. Sean Burke, our Director of Planning and Development. Joseph Solacito, Director of the Mansfield Municipal Electric Department. Michael Raymond, the Veterans Service Agent. Robert Blackman, the Building Inspector. Amy Donovan Palmer, the Health Agent. Jaclyn Boudreau, the Treasurer Collector. Paul Durensis Esquire, our Town Council. Edward Donahue, the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. Michael Conley, the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. Matthew Jakes, the Director of Facilities. Jocelyn Lemare, Director of Human Resources. Chris Rossiter, the Waste Water Operations Manager. Justin DeRozier, our Fire Chief. And Matthew P. Karen of Gale Associates. All those in favor of allowing them to speak, if called upon, please raise your hand. All those opposed, thank you. And I notice you all have your yellow cards. That's the voting card, so that we can identify who's voting in here today. The rules of order are simple. When you will, let me see, speakers will come up to, I believe, the microphone here in the front. It's a very sensitive mic, so you don't have to wrap your hands around it. And people presenting an article have up to 10 minutes, 15 minutes if needed to present it. Questions and comments, please limit them to no more than two minutes. Keep in mind, it takes two minutes to read two pages double-spaced type. So before you speak, think of your thoughts, get them laid out, and present them in a succinct manner. And remember, in any speaking involvement like this, brevity is the secret of success of getting your message across. And, let's see, what else can I say there? Oh, there will, motions to reconsider. A motion to reconsider is basically a parliamentary method of bringing something that has been voted on back to the floor to make a correction, or if there's new information that would affect the vote. So anyone wishing to move for reconsideration on an article must present their reason for reconsideration. Otherwise, we'll pass over it. Any questions from the House?
So we just voted on all of the people that you said could possibly speak today?
That's correct.
But most of those I recognized as employees of the town?
That's correct.
Was the last one an employee of the town?
Matt Karen or Gale Associates, probably not. That's an engineering firm.
So do you think it would make more sense to ask, can all the employees of the town speak versus have them in a different category than non-employees of the town? Because I don't know why he's here to speak. I want my employees to speak, but I don't know why he's here to speak.
Gale Engineering, well, let me see, Mr. Dumas, say what?
Airport Commission.
Oh, for the airport, he's speaking for the Airport Commission.
Okay, but does that make sense for employees to automatically be able to speak?
Well, actually, no one-
Non-employees to be voted on?
Well, nobody gets to automatically speak. They have to be voted by the-
Okay, but could we vote them in two separate tranches? People who are employees and people who are not employees? Because we've hired our employees.
We also hired the associates, the consultants.
Okay, is there anyone on that list that we have not hired?
I don't know, everyone, I believe everyone else on that list is an employee, Mr. Dumas?
All employees of-
They're all employees or someone the town has hired.
Okay, thank you.
Pardon? Oh, and he's not here today either, so. But if he was, he could speak. Okay, let's go to motion one, Mr. Dumas.
Excellent, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here at the DPW Division Highway Garage. And thank you to our, certainly our Select Board, our School Committee and Finance Committee members who are also here with us today. And especially all you, the members of the public, who believe in town meeting and why this is so important. So thank you for taking the time to be here. So why a special town meeting? So go with the items that you'll see here on the screen. Number one, flexibility to help weather the COVID-19 storm. So our financial needs relative to COVID-19 for fiscal '21 for the rest of the year are certainly unknown at this time, but could be certainly significant. So placing available funds into the FinCom Reserve Fund will now give us the ability of addressing those needs as they occur. Also, if you've seen in your motions packet and those that were presented online, allows us to secure funding for urgent PFAS removal at two of our locations and also well improvements at two locations as well. The removal of PFAS and other well site improvements need to begin as soon as possible to ensure safe and adequate drinking water in time for high demand for next summer in 2021. I'd also like just to briefly comment on our committed financial team. Certainly, that that consists of our Select Board, School Committee, FinCom, and Town Management and our staff. And we have consensus meeting in order to be able to have consensus on key financial decisions. And it's also important for you, the public, to know that we're performing well under the current circumstances so far in fiscal 2021 financially. And that we're committed certainly to our financial policies and certainly returning to funds in our stabilization fund at annual town meeting that'll be coming up in May or June in 2021. So just in our timeline for fiscal '21 budgetary revisions that we're here to deal with today, just to recall that we met at annual town meeting on June 23, 2020, at the Xfinity Center. And since that point in time on September 10, we had planned for a revenue reduction of the state of 10%, being very conservative. However, they level funded us to fiscal '20 levels, which means that we have an additional $2,57,949 in state aid. So today, the request is that that additional state aid be placed in the FinCom Reserve Fund. That provides any transfers that are needed for any COVID-19 expenses between the period of today and June 30, 2020, 2021. And also preserves the ability that I just referenced to repay our stabilization fund at annual town meeting. We'll also be making adjustments today to the Parking Enterprise Funds, which adjusts the revenue and expenses of the reductions due to COVID-19. And also taking our water and sewer retained earnings and placing it into their respective retained earning funds. Also dealing with some unpaid bills and also the paydown of two projects for our existing debt that we have. On our next slide, you'll see our free cash. It was certified on September 15, just a short time ago, and this is for fiscal '20 amounts, in the amount of $1.391 million. And of that amount, the largest amount that you'll see on the screen is about $791,000 of that $1.3 million that's being requested to go to FinCom Reserve as well. And then also $200,000 to pay for our MBTA assessment the prior year. Bills that I just mentioned, a little over $5,000. Our assessor five-year revaluation and 10-year cyclical inspections, that's money that we set aside for those two things, so totaling $70,000. Paying off the two remaining, 50% of the remaining loans for the Tower One repairs and the Plymouth Street Fire Station improvements and compensated absences, and that would make up the use of our free cash. On the next slide, we're dealing with some capital improvement items, specifically dealing with seven vehicles. And so these are replacing surplus vehicles that were already part of our fleet. This represents the Highway Division, Sewer Division, and the Water Division. And so they're made up as follows. For Highway, a four-by-four dump with plow, and that's replacing a 15-year-old vehicle. In the Sewer Enterprise Fund, it's a four-by-four pickup with plow and a four-by-four dump with plow, replacing a 15- and 18-year-old vehicle. In the Water Division, a 10-reel dump with plow, replacing a 35-year-old dump, and that's split half between General Government and the Water Enterprise. And also in Water, replacing three pickup trucks, replacing 11-year-old and 13-year-old vehicles for $120,000, and that's out of the Water Enterprise. The next section that we're going to be talking about today is the PFAS removal. And what are PFAS? PFAS is a group of man-made chemicals that have been manufactured and used in a variety of industries since the 1940s. And it's evidence that exposure to PFAS can lead to adverse human effects. You know, examples are things that are fire-retardant or heat-resistant. You can be found in foam, cookware, clothing, and non-stick surfaces, to-go containers, et cetera. And our goal is to be able to design and install PFAS removal treatment systems at both our Kate Springs well and Walsh wells, so that we can deliver safe drinking water to our residents. It's important also to go over a timeline. First time that was heard of for PFAS was on a national level, and that was EPA, the Environmental Protective Agency, and that they established a level in 2016 for two of the PFAS compounds that was at 70 parts per trillion. That's how small that is. Fast forward to June 12, 2019, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection asked communities to voluntarily start testing for PFAS. And in September, we joined the state and started testing. In December 2019, the Mass DEP proposed a level of 20 parts per trillion. And just to put that into perspective, that's about 20 postage stamps in the whole city of Dallas. And again, that's how small of an amount that is. Kate Springs in April 2020 tested just slightly over that proposed amount at 22.4. In June, we provided an update to the Select Board, and we posted a notice on our town website. And August, Walsh well then tested slightly over 20 at 22.9 parts per trillion. And just recently in September of this year, just a couple months ago, Mass DEP finalized their PFAS regulations on October 2nd, just about a month ago. So the two areas that we're talking about today, you'll see on the screen, for those people in town who know where this is, Kate Springs, located right off of Maple Street, and that site typically gives us about 960,000 gallons of finished water a day. Since the point in time we tested above, that well system has been shut off. And just to put that into perspective, for the amount of water we use in typical summer demand is about 4 million gallons a day, so you can understand why this well site is so important. The second well site for PFAS removal is over on West Mansfield off of Gilbert Street. And you can see this is the area that's highlighted in blue, and that represents the Walsh wells. So for these two projects, for Kate Springs is first listed on the screen, for engineering, permitting, design, and construction phase, it's about $4.18 million for its estimate. The second that you see listed on the screen is Walsh wells, again, for the same thing, for a total $4,090,000 for a total, two projects combined, for $8.270 million. The next portion is also important as we're dealing with PFAS and just the general growth in town, is for well improvements. And our goal is to design and install improvements to enhance our ability to increase our pumping capacity at Walsh wells and behind us at Prescott well. So for these improvements, for Walsh wells for engineering, design, and construction for $2.58 million. The pumping capacity for Prescott's wells eight and nine for engineering and construction, $2.88 million. To replace the green sand and its associated pipes at the Prescott Treatment Plant for $70,000. An upgrading of our SCADA radio hardware and communication system for $120,000 for $5.65 million. So that you can see, in total, for the PFAS treatment process, the well system upgrades, and the vehicles, come to a total borrowing of $14.19 million. It's also important to note for you, the rate payer, and for those who may be watching, that this is only an approximate 1% increase on the water rate, the way that this is structured. Onto some other items that we'll be talking about today. In Articles 15 through 19, Articles 15 has to do amending an navigation easement, and that's over the airspace that's used for our Mansfield Municipal Airport. This was for properties in the town of Norton, and we voted this back in June. However, this is an amendment to include language that says "and/or the Airport Commission", and you will see that bold and underlined in your motions packet. Articles 16, 17, and 18 have to do with expanding our rail trail. So right now, as you're aware, that ends at the airport. This will extend from the airport down through the town of Norton to our sewer treatment facility that's located near the City of Taunton Line, near the industrial park. And those all have to do with, even though the land is where the sewer is today and where the sewer easement on the old rail line, this is a required federal requirement that we have to go through and actually adopt and have the language on to acquire. And this is just to start the process. There will be more steps that will require after this. But this costs $3.99 million that's being totally paid for by the state and federal government, and that's programmed in federal fiscal year 2022. And the last article that's being suggested today is Article number 19, and this has to do with, you've seen the improvements that have been done by a private developer at the Old Chocolate Factory that's been changed into residential opportunities, and that you'll also see that there's a drainage system that's been improved, and the town will be dumping into that drainage system. So we need to actually acquire that specific land, and that's what Article 19 does. And that is my summary at the moment. Mr. Moderator, at this time, I'd like to be able to introduce Mr. Brian Eagle from the Finance Committee for his slides today.
Thank you, Kevin. And I'm sure only in New England do we go from snow to 70 degrees in about a week. So I know my kids are much happier to be at home, and I really appreciate everybody spending time coming out here, doing your duty as a resident and member of the community and giving back. I wanted to quickly talk, if we can go to the first slide, second slide, about FinCom's role in how government runs and your role as well. So the Finance Committee and the members are over here, really sits between the Select Board, the administration, and you, the residents. We serve two masters. We give guidance to the Select Board on financial advice. We try to get you more information so you can make informed decisions at today's meeting and others. And you should feel comfortable that the FinCom has a lot of policy experience. We have a member of the Federal Reserve up in Boston. We have bankers, insurance, I deal with public policy, so I see trends across the country, which allows us to be very vigilant in reviewing and asking the questions to, again, are we making strategic, smart financial decisions? And do you, the resident, have the information you need? And one of the best examples of that is something you're going to be voting on today with the PFAS and the vehicles. And this is something that we worked very closely on with Kevin, with Barry, the third-party financial advisor. We spend hours asking questions, why are you structuring things the way you are? What's the impact over the long term? How do interest rates impact? When do we have to change things? What's the impact on the rate user? With the goal of getting the most clarity and understanding, why is the town spending money and why are they structuring it the way they are? So you should feel very comfortable that we put in the due diligence and the recommendations and the guidance, so you can feel comfortable making an informed decision. But one thing I want to make clear is, we, as your representatives, will never apologize for spending extra time to carefully review how your money, because this is your money, how it's spent, and to make sure the town's thinking strategically about any financial decision. But besides our role, you have a role as well. You can listen to our meetings, you can ask questions live. I think Finance Committee was one of the first to actually go to live questions in the middle of the pandemic. You can email us, you can come to Select Board, participate. It shouldn't just be a special town meeting or all-town meeting that you come and ask questions. As I said, Barry and Kevin and the Finance Committee spend three, four meetings, hours, I might have hit double-digit hours. Those are opportunities for you to listen and engage with us, but it's a great opportunity. If you can go to the next slide. This is just philosophy, and we're going to go to the next slide. You all experienced this as much as the town did, the financial pressure of the pandemic. And we worked really closely as a Finance Committee with the schools and the town and the Select Board to craft a realistic budget that reflected the realities of revenue declines. We all know beverages, people weren't going out to the restaurants, they weren't staying in hotels, the Xfinity Center didn't have their season. Unlike some of our neighbors in Norton and Franklin that had to look at significant layoffs or two-and-a-half override, we came up with, as Kevin said, a reasonable, realistic budget. And what that did is it put us in a position where all of a sudden the state said, we're going to give you more money than you thought. That's great to get money that was unexpected. And FinCom supports putting the majority of that in the Finance Committee's reserves to allow us to meet the financial unknowns of 2021, because there's nobody out there who knows what's coming next. And I see it in all the states. We can't predict, do the schools need more money? Is Xfinity going to close down again? We want to be in a position to meet the needs of the town as quickly and as efficiently as possible. And if, and I fully expect, when we have money left at the end, we have a memorandum of understanding in place that the schools and the town and FinCom all agree to, to put the money back into our stabilization counts, make ourselves whole before we decide to spend again. So again, fiscally conservative, fiscally prudent, with proper oversight. If you can go to the next slide. The storm's not over. As I said, we don't know what's coming left. Next, there's a lot of unknowns. And one that was mentioned, so the state gave us more money. I don't think realistically we expect that to happen again. They had to borrow from their rainy day fund. So right now, and I want to give applause to Kevin and the schools and Barry, are working diligently to put together a budget that reflects that reality. And the Finance Committee is working hand-in-hand with them, with the Select Board, to meet and discuss and understand the impact. So when we have the next budget, again, it is realistic, it reflects the current environment, and it's something that's still going to be able to provide you the services you've come to expect from our town. So all this goes to show that FinCom's staying on top of it, we're involved, the town understands, and they're working hand-in-hand with us to reduce a budget that you can be proud of. But it can only be as successful as your involvement. So please, ask questions. I know when I was a resident, I would email Steve Schoenfeld, my Select Board, and the chairman Frank Delvecchio, and they loved to answer me. And then they would have conversations in coffees. They will take your questions. So will FinCom. Participate, ask. This is your money in the end of the day. So with that, I'm going to end my presentation just by saying thank you for coming out and for being active members of this community.
Thank you. You have a little bit of financial overview. First off, would you please introduce the members of your Finance Committee? Thank you. Also, could the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen introduce our selectmen? It's pardon me, I've been correct, the Select Board?
Select Board, Mr. Chairman.
Board, yes.
Vice Chairman Neil Ryan. Our Clerk Jess Aptowitz. Steve Schoenfeld. And Mike Trowbridge.
Thank you. You now know who the players are. Okay, Article One, Motion One. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
So who'd I forget?
Hi, I'm Kiara O'Neill, Chair of the School Committee. I've got Lynn Kavicki, Vice Chair of School Committee, Jen Walsh, and Linda Fernando. And not here today is Lauren Shear. Thank you.
My sincere apologies. Oh, I will say one thing, you probably noticed the acoustics in here are rather reverberating. So when you're speaking, could you slow down a little bit? I think it'll make it a little more understandable for what you're saying, so.
Excellent, Mr. Moderator. As spoken for Article One, this is the additional state aid. Move that the sum of $2,57,949 be hereby appropriated to the Finance Committee Reserve Fund for transfer for fiscal year 2021 tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Finance Committee, have a recommendation?
Support 7-0.
7-0, okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Delvecchio?
The Select Board supported this motion, along with all the other motions unanimously, five for, none against.
Okay, so I don't have to bother you again with that sort of recommendation?
Select Board supported, sorry, the Finance Committee, I can't speak for Frank, supported all the financial motions, seven to zero.
Very good, so we have the team in charge, okay. Mr. Delvecchio?
I've been reminded that I'm a resident of the town, I have to make the motion, so I'm making it. I move the question, I move the article.
Oh, you move Article One, okay, Motion One. Okay, do we have a further presentation on that? Oh, seeing none, are there any questions on Article One, Motion One, $2,57,949 appropriated to the Finance Committee Reserve Fund for transfer as written? All those in favor, please raise your yellow card. All those opposed, motion passes.
Excellent, thank you.
Motion Two?
Article One, Motion Two is for our MBTA assessment. So moving that $200,000 be hereby transferred from free cash in the treasury of the town or under its native fund balance to be spent by the town manager, A, to defray the real allocation of the state's regional transit assessment, and B, to defray a certain personnel service expenses of the Parking Enterprise Fund.
Selectmen?
So moved.
Oh, so moved, okay, motion has been moved. And the recommendation from the Select Board and the Finance Committee have been made. Questions and comments on Motion Two as presented?
Hello, Bill Clumery, 55 Fowler Street. The $200,000, is that to cover the costs that the town pays to the MBTA?
That's correct.
Is there any adjustment in that number that the town has to pay to the MBTA because of the lack of revenue? Are they accepting the same amount that they did last year?
So our assessment itself doesn't change. The amount that we have to pay in our parking agreement has been reduced. So it's a separate agreement that we pay for parking versus the actual MBT assessment, which is separate and distinct from the parking revenue.
So is the assessment, this assessment's being paid in full, our revenues have dropped significantly, so we're going to, we're using some of the, some of this money to pay on that. Was there a request to them to lower the assessment also?
And so this assessment, as it said in the motion, this is our regional transit assessment, so this also includes GAATRA.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions and comments on Motion Two as presented? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Motion Two, please raise your card. All those opposed, motion passes. Go to Motion Three.
Article One, Motion Three, this is to reduce our Parking Enterprise Fund budget. So move that Article Five, Motion Four of the June 23, 2020 annual town meeting be deleted and replaced with the following appropriation. So that Article Five, Motion Four would read as follows. Move that $98,099.40 be hereby appropriated from the Parking Enterprise Fund revenues and that $101,596 be hereby appropriated from the Parking Enterprise Fund retained earnings for a total amount to be appropriated of $199,695.40, together with the previous $30,000, which had been previously appropriated at annual town meeting on June 23, 2020, for a new total enterprise budget in the amount of $229,695.40. To be expended by the town manager with the approval of the Director of the Mansfield Department of Public Works on maintenance, operation, improvements, access, and egress to parking lots and- Works on maintenance, operation, improvements, access, and egress to parking lots and other costs related to the town-owned commuter rail parking lots, as previously defined in Article Seven of the April 24, 2012 annual town meeting, for the ensuing 12-month period beginning July 1, 2020, in the column entitled "2021 Revised as Set forth Below" on the screen.
So moved. Okay, the article has been moved. Questions and comments on Motion Three as presented? It has been approved by the Finance Board and the Select Board. Seeing none, we'll put Motion Three to a vote. All those in favor, please raise the yellow card. All those opposed, motion passes. Let's go to Article Two.
Article Two for previous year's bills. Move that the sum of $5,078 be hereby transferred from the sources listed below to pay for the following unpaid prior-year bills as shown below. For public buildings, Fin Graphics, in the amount of $1,668. DPW Highway for VHB for $950. DPW Highway, Shady Tree Landscaping for $2,460, for a total of $5,078 from the free trash in the treasury of the town or undesigned fund balance.
So moved. Okay. Questions and comments on Article Two as presented, the previous year's unpaid bills? Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. Now, this is a unique article, being a previous year's unpaid bills at a special town meeting. It requires a nine-tenths vote, unless, of course, it is unanimous. So I'm going to ask all those opposed to Article Two to please raise your yellow card. I don't see any yellow cards. All those in favor of Article Two, I move that it passes unanimously. Let's go to Article Three.
Article Three. Move that the sum of $30,000 be hereby transferred from free cash in the treasury of the town undesigned fund balance to defray a portion towards the expenses of the fiscal 2022 five-year revaluation of all properties in the town as required by Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
So moved. Okay, Article Three has been moved. It's been approved by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Questions and comments on Article Three as presented? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Three, yellow cards up. All those opposed, motion passes. Go to Article Four.
Article Four. Move that the sum of $40,000 be hereby transferred from free cash in the treasury of the town undesigned fund balance to defray a portion of the expenses for the next 10-year cyclical inspection of all properties in town as required by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
So moved. Okay, the article has been moved, approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Questions and comments on Article Four? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Four, raise them up. All those opposed, Article Four passes. Let's go to Article Five, Motion One.
Thank you. This is for the DPW Sewer Vehicles, asking and moving that $145,000 be hereby appropriated to be spent by the town manager for the following various capital improvement projects for the Town of Mansfield Sewer Enterprise, including all costs incidental and related thereto. DPW Sewer Enterprise four-by-four dump truck, $95,000, a one-ton four-by-four pickup truck for $50,000, for a total of $145,000. And to meet this appropriation, that $145,000 be hereby appropriated from the Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings.
So moved. Okay, this motion has been approved by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Questions and comments on Article Five, Motion One, Vehicles for the Water?
Sewer.
Sewer Department. All those in, any further comments on the motion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Five, Motion One, please raise them. All those opposed, motion passes. Go to Motion Two.
Thank you. This is for the PFAS removal and the well system improvements. Move that the sum of $13,920,000 to be spent by the town manager is appropriated for the purpose of financing the cost of designing, upgrading, constructing, and/or replacing various water department facilities and infrastructure, including the Kate Springs Well, the Walsh Well, the Prescott Well numbers eight and nine, and skater upgrades, and including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in Section One of Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $13,920,000 and to issue bonds or notes therefore under Chapter 44 of the General Laws and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws. That the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, established pursuant to Chapter 29(c), in connection therewith to enter into a financing agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust, and that the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and/or to for any federal estate aid available for the project, or for the financing thereof, and that the town manager with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection, to expend all funds available for the project, and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project. Any premium received for the sale of bonds or notes approved by this vote, less such premium applied to the payment of the cost of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied with the payment of the cost approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed by such costs by a like amount.
So moved. Okay, motion has been made, approved by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Questions and comments on Article Five, Motion Two as presented?
Yes, sir.
Hello, Jason LaVoy, 354 Franklin Street. I'm a water resources engineer living in town, and I had a question about, so it sounds like we're going after some SRF funding through the Mass. DEP Clean Water Trust. That's great, and I'm glad to hear that. What is being done to determine the source of the PFAS? Is that part of this project, or is that a separate project to be done down the road? Or is this strictly just for the upgrades at the treatment plants?
So that's a very good question. Thank you for asking that, and I apologize for not making that a part of my presentation today. So as part of this project, the Department of Environmental Protection requires the town as part of this process to also go after the source as well. So that is part of this loan authorization as well.
I have one additional question. What does this do to other projects that we had planned in the long-term capital plan? Are there other projects that will be pushed off because of this new emerging issue?
No, that's also a very good plan as well. So everything ounce that's still in the capital line for the Water Division still remains in our five-year capital plan, sir. You're welcome.
Randall Tatum, 385 Mill Street. I'd like to know how this bond will be structured for the payment.
Sure. So underneath this scenario of what I had mentioned, the fact, the way that we have structured this is that first, because of the fact this has to be designed and engineered before going into construction, what we do is first go into a bond anticipated, a ban, a bond anticipated note, and right now that that amount is about 1.2% of what we can go through and pay now. And by the fact that we get into years four and five, what is anticipated is to be able to go in, we have about $400,000 coming off in debt service five years from now. So we were planning on going temporary to permanent, and also raising $100,000 a year as part of our operating budget. So therefore, by the time we hit year five, with the $400,000 that we built up annually as part of the debt service in the budget, plus $400,000 coming off of debt service, we'll be able to make our permanent bond payment of $800,000 a year. And so through that process, it would be a 1% increase on the rate specifically associated with this debt service. If we saw, and working with the FinCom and Select Board and School Committee, if we saw that there was an increase in rates coming earlier than anticipated, we could bond in anticipated of that five-year period of time as well.
So how many years can we stretch the bonds out for?
So this is for a total of 30 years.
Thirty years, okay.
You're welcome.
Further questions and comments on Article Five, Motion Two? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. This is a bonding issue, requires a two-thirds vote. However, if from my view, I can determine if a show of hands, there is definitely two-thirds, I can declare it as such. So all those in favor of Article Five, Motion Two as presented, please raise your cards. All those opposed? I see no opposition, so I'll declare it unanimous. Next article?
Thank you. This is for the DPW Highway and Water Division Vehicles. Article Five, Motion Three. Move that the sum of $485,000 be hereby appropriated to be spent by the town manager to pay for the cost of five vehicles, which consist of three pickup trucks and two dump trucks, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $485,000 under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the Town of Mansfield upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any sum premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay for such costs by a like amount.
So moved. Okay, Article Five, Motion Three has been moved and approved by the Select Board and Finance Committee. Questions and comments on Article Five, Motion Three, the purchase of more trucks? Yes. Name and address, please.
Eileen Cusack, Six Conrod Court.
Thank you.
So forgive me if I'm misunderstanding, Article Five, Motion Three and Motion One, are those two separate sets of trucks?
Yes, for a total of seven, this is for five.
We're going to buy seven trucks. Okay, and my question is, when we buy a new truck, do we sell an old truck?
Sure, that's a very good question. And if we, if when I made my presentation earlier this morning, this afternoon, if when I listed off the seven vehicles that we were talking about, I had stated that these are replacing surplus vehicles. So they were taken off of our current fleet, we surplus them, and we sold them.
Okay, very good.
And so, and these are replacing things ranging from the years of 15 years old to a maximum age of 35 years old, or what these are replacing.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Further questions on Article Five, Motion Three? Okay, borrowing again is called for, so require a two-thirds vote, unless a show of hands makes it obvious. All those in favor of Article Five, Motion Three, raise your cards. All those opposed? I see no opposition, so it passes unanimously. Go to Article Six.
Article Six. Move that the sum of $100,000 be hereby transferred from free cash in the treasury of the town undesigned fund balance to be deposited in the future payment of accrued liabilities for compensated absences reserve funds.
So moved. Okay. Motion's been made and approved by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Questions and comments on Article Six? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Six as presented, please raise your card. All those opposed, it passes. Go to Article Seven.
Article Seven. Move that the sum of $6,368.20 be hereby appropriated to be spent by the town manager to address the impact of transportation network services on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure, or any other public purpose substantially related to the operation of the transportation network services in the Town of Mansfield, included but not limiting to the Complete Streets Program, established in Section One of Chapter 90a of the Massachusetts General Laws, and other programs that support alternative modes of transportation. And to meet this appropriation, that $6,368.20 be hereby transferred from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund Resits Reserve for Appropriation Fund.
So moved. Okay, Article Seven has been moved and approved by the Select Board and Finance Committee. Questions and comments on Article Seven? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Seven as presented? All those opposed? It passes. Go to Article Eight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is for free cash to be moved into the FinCom Reserve. So Article Eight, moving that the sum of $791,817 be hereby transferred from free cash in the treasury of the town undesigned fund balance to the Finance Committee Reserve Fund.
So moved. Okay, Article Eight has been moved, and has been approved by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Questions and comments on Article Eight as presented? Yes, sir.
Bill Clumby, 55 Fowler. How much money is in the free cash today after we deposit this?
So it's actually a total, the total amount is $1,391,000 is the total amount of our free cash that has not been touched. And if we go back to the slide, this would be about $800,000 of that $1.391 million that would be going into FinCom Reserve.
Okay, further questions and comments on Article Eight as presented? Seeing none, put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Eight as presented, please raise your card. All those opposed, Article Eight passes. Go to Article Nine.
Mr. Moderator, this is the Reserve Fund for Transfer from the Sewer Enterprise Fund going into their reserve. So move that the sum of $1,235,102 be hereby transferred from the Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings to the Sewer Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund for Transfer.
So moved. Okay, Finance Committee and Select Board approve. Any further questions and comments on Article Nine? Seeing none, we'll put Article Nine to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion passes. Let's go to Article Ten.
Yes, thank you. Article Ten. Move that the sum of $205,286 be transferred from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings to the Water Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund for Transfer.
So moved. Okay, motion's been made and approved by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Questions and comments on Article Ten as presented? Seeing none, we'll put that to a vote. All those in favor of Article Ten, please raise your hand, yellow card. Thank you. All those opposed, motion passes. Article Eleven.
Thank you, and the same for the Airport Reserves. So move that the sum of $78,720 be hereby transferred from the Airport Enterprise Fund retained earnings to the Airport Enterprise Fund Reserve Fund for Transfer.
So moved. Motion's been made and approved by the Select Board and Finance Committee. Questions and comments on Article Eleven as presented? Seeing none, we'll put that to a vote. All those in favor, please your card. All those opposed, motion passes. Let's go to Article Twelve.
And Article Twelve, Mr. Moderator, is requested to be passed over.
Article Twelve is being passed over. Article Thirteen?
Article Thirteen, this is in regards to the 50% paydown of the remaining Plymouth Street Fire Station improvements. So to move that the sum of $125,000 be transferred from free cash undesigned fund balance for the fiscal 2021 debt service for the Plymouth Street Fire Station improvements loan.
So moved. Article Fourteen has been made and presented. Finance Committee and Select Board are approving it. Questions and comments on Article Fourteen as presented? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Fourteen, please raise your card. Pardon me, Thirteen, be bad. Okay, all those in favor of Article Thirteen, raise your card. All those opposed, Article Thirteen passes. Go to Fourteen.
And Mr. Moderator, this is for the 50% paydown on the Tower One repair loan. So move that $100,000 be hereby transferred from free cash undesigned fund balance for fiscal 2021 debt service for the Tower One repairs loan.
So moved. Okay, Article Fourteen has been made, been approved by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Questions and comments on Article Fourteen as presented? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Fourteen, raise your card. All those opposed, Article Fourteen passes. Let's go to Fifteen.
Mr. Moderator, this is in regards to amending the vote for the Airport Commission for the Avigation Easements to Add and/or Airport Commission. So move that voted pursuant to the Article 22 of the June 23, 2020 annual town meeting be amended by the assertion of the phrases, Town of Mansfield through the and/or Airport Commission, in the first paragraph of said Article 22 motion, so that the paragraph as revised would read as follows. Vote to authorize the Town of Mansfield through the Select Board and/or Airport Commission to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain certain approached surface avocation easements for the unobstructed passage of aircraft in and through all airspace located at or above the surface of certain real estate property as described below.
So moved. Okay, Article Fifteen has been made, it's been approved by the Selectmen. Does the Airport Commission have anything to say on this? The Airport Commission approves it, okay. Questions and comments from the House on Article Fifteen? Yes, sir.
Dana St. James, Six Harding Lane. I live in that area, and the avigation that you're talking about is going to affect certain properties. My backyard is in- My backyard is in Norton. Will this be affecting my trees? That's my question.
Trees?
Six Harding Lane. I mean, this, you're gonna be removing obstructions, and I know years ago there was a similar planned, they called it Stadium Bowl Plan, where they were gonna cut all kinds of trees surrounding the airport down there. Does this have anything to do with that?
This wasn't for the trimming of trees, this is just for the air rights for the passage over it. So we found that per FAA rules and regulations, we have to have recorded at the Registry of Deeds, actual navigation easements over these four said properties in the Town of Norton, and that's all that this is.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Further questions and comments on Article Fifteen as presented? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. It does involve changes to an article that had eminent domain and other little details in it. Just to be sure, I do wanna get a two-thirds vote on this. So on Article Fifteen, I'm gonna ask for the negative vote first. Is anyone opposed to Article Fifteen? I see no opposition. All those in favor of Article Fifteen, passes unanimously. Thank you, Article Sixteen.
Article Sixteen. Move that the Select Board be hereby authorized to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain by way of a conformatory taking to the extent not already owned by the Town of Mansfield, that the following described properties or easements and/or temporary construction easements, as indicated below, for the use of a recreational trail and underground sewer lines, included but not limiting to the construction, drainage, utility, access, and/or related purposes in, on, and under parcels of land abutting and/or near Fruit Street and Harding Lane, and that the other parcels of land as shown on the plans entitled Plan and Profile of the Rail Trail Extension in the Town of Norton and Mansfield Bristol County Preliminary Right-of-Way Plans, dated January 24, 2018, and presented by Beta Incorporated, and that the care, custody, and control of a portion or portions of the parcel of land identified by the assessors, as parcels and addresses as set forth below, for the same stated purposes by he hereby transfer to the Select Board for Maintenance, Operation, Repair, and Reconstruction of Sewer Wastewater Lines, Recreational Trail Uses, Parking, and Trail-Related Purposes, and further that the Select Board be authorized to enter into any and all agreements and to take any and all actions necessary, or appropriate to effectuate the foregoing transactions as follows. MAP 34 Lot 149, 34-130, 36-164, 36-165, 36-166, 36-167, 36-168, 36-169, 36-170, 36-171, 36-172, 36-173, 36-174, 36-175, 36-176, 36-177, 36-178, 36-28, 36-25, 36-29.
So moved. Okay. Article Sixteen has been made, presented, and approved by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Questions and comments on Article Sixteen, please?
Aaron Gallagher, Nine Harding Lane. I'm one of the properties here. I'd appreciate it if you could just explain to us what this means for all of the people on that list, please, just for the record. I'd appreciate it.
Good afternoon. I'm Lee Azanera, the Director of Public Works for the Town of Mansfield. Basically, this is something that, because of the trail going in, and the federal requirements that the town has to do, we don't intend to take any of your property. The, we are doing title, title exams on all the properties. This is more in case the town doesn't have the full fee simple purchase of the bike path, the abutters may have some interest. There, there's only maybe a couple of properties near Fruit Street that may be some small temporary construction easements, but all the parcels are listed in case they find that your parcel has some interest in part of the path. Even though the town has owned it for 40 years, the federal requirements now make us go back and examine all the titles, all the way back to when the railroad acquired the property.
Thank you. I would just actually ask in the future, this is just a point of, point of note here, that if you're gonna directly affect people's property with a warrant, it would be really great if you could just send a direct letter to these properties. It would've taken all of $5 in postage to send direct letters to these people. I don't know how many of them are here tonight, but I just found out about this this morning, and I know that it's posted, but we don't always look at the posts. So in the future, when you're directly affecting people's properties with a warrant, it would be great to know about that ahead of time in a direct communication from whoever. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further questions and comments on? Article Sixteen, where?
Mr. Moderator? Can you hear me?
Yes, okay, we have a gentleman in the tent out back who is speaking, so go ahead.
Okay, so a couple of questions. First of all, is notice required?
Oh, please, could you give us your name and address, please?
Yeah, sure. Olivier Kozlowski, 22 Tracy Circle. First of all, were the, was notice required to be given, speaking on the last speaker's comment, is notice required to be given to the owners of the parcels that are, are identified here?
So yes, so when we begin that actual process, as Director Azanera was explaining, this is just to start that process and to do all the title examinations necessary, and then everyone will be due their due process moving forward from that point in time.
Okay, but no, what you're saying is no notice was required for this article today?
That's correct.
Okay, and I guess by extension then, abutters to these parcels were not required to be given notice about this warrant article today?
That is correct.
Okay. Sixteen and eighteen, Articles Sixteen and eighteen look very similar. Can you distinguish them and, and, you know, is it different parcels doing the same thing? Or like, what's the difference between them?
Article Seventeen, I mean, Article Eighteen is land that is currently owned by the Airport Commission, so those parcels are, are owned by the Airport, Town of Mansfield Airport, so it's the same thing, only the parcels wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the public affected, it would be, it would be the airport. And, and then there's Articles Seventeen is Fruit Street, the cross, where the path crosses Fruit Street.
Yeah, that's over by Lincoln.
Even though Fruit Street has, has been accepted as a public way by the Town of Mansfield roughly 24 years ago, the federal, the federal government does, does not recognize the method that, that was accepted by the state of Massachusetts, and we had to do what's referred to as a meets and bounds description to accept that part of Fruit Street where the path is gonna cross, because there's gonna be federal funds expanded in that area. So it's, it's a formality that we're required to by the federal government in order to be, for them to allow the expanding of the federal funds for the project.
Okay. And one last question, perhaps this relates more to, to Eighteen than Sixteen, forgive me if it does, I'll ask it two questions from now if you prefer, but some of the funds, I think it was 34, 115, was money that the Airport Commission acquired, received from the federal government to purchase the, the, the place at the end of the bike path on the Fruit Street side where they cut down all the trees over there. And it was my impression, it was my neighbor's impression, that, you know, they, they weren't allowed, they didn't have any ability to give any rights of any kind to anybody else because it was purchased with federal money, so everybody go away. Is they, is that why that's in Eighteen instead of Sixteen? And can the airport do what they're looking to do even though the federal government paid for that lot that is being affected here?
Yes, that's why that's separately broken out into Article Eighteen. And again, this is to be able to start that necessary process of approvals and going through to make sure that everything is through all of the land title examinations and the approvals from the necessary sources of funding that are necessary to do such activity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, further questions on Article Sixteen as presented and discussed? Seeing none? Please require a simple majority vote. All those in favor of Article Sixteen as presented, please raise your card. Is there any opposition to Sixteen? I see three or four people out there, so I can't call it unanimous, but I can definitely call it two-thirds. Okay, Article Sixteen passes by a two-thirds vote. Go to Article Seventeen.
Article Seventeen. Move that the relocated portions of Fruit Street, as heretofore reviewed and approved by the Select Board and Planning Board, as shown on Plan entitled Fruit Street Right-of-Way Relocation Plan, dated August 31, 2020, prepared by Lighthouse Land Surveying LLC, be hereby accepted, and that the Fruit Street relocated as a public way, and that the Select Board be hereby authorized to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain, the properties so relocated or easements in said portions of relocated Fruit Street for public way purposes, including any drainage, access, utility, and/or other easements related thereto.
So moved. Okay, motion's been made and approved by the Select Board and the Finance Committee? Yes. They didn't? Oh. Okay, so ignore anything about Finance Committee there. Other comments? Oh, what he said was the Finance Committee took no position on Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, and I presume Nineteen? And Fifteen, yes, they took no position on those. Just the Select Board. Okay, so, okay, Seventeen. Any further questions, comments on Article Seventeen as presented and approved by the Select Board? Seeing none, we'll put that to a vote. This'll require a two-thirds vote since eminent domain and possible purchases involved. All those in favor of Article Seventeen, please raise your card. All those opposed? I can safely declare a two-thirds vote. It passes, and go to Article Eighteen.
Mr. Moderator, point of order, please?
Yes.
Sharon Friedman, 29 Pleasant Street. When you have a two-thirds vote and you're declaring it, two, you're declaring it a two-thirds vote, do you not, for the record, have to have specific numbers attached to that? Or can you just say, okay, it looks like a two-thirds vote? Just a point of order.
It's done by a town bylaw that gives me the authority to declare it.
No, I understand that, but if it's a two-thirds vote, do you need to have certain number opposed and a certain number approved so you can get the two-thirds vote, rather than just a show of?
Yeah, two-thirds generally means?
Rather than just the show of cards. I, I just wanna make sure that when the state reviews all of this, they're gonna approve what we did.
They will approve it, it's the decision of the moderator to determine a two-thirds vote, and if the hall questioned my judgment, they could call for a count.
Okay, is that the town council, is that acceptable? Okay, thank you.
Town Council says that's correct. Thank you, Town Council. Now we're up to Article, forgot where I was. All right, we passed on Seventeen, now we're on Article Eighteen.
Article Eighteen. Move that the Mansfield Select Board and/or the Mansfield Airport Commission be hereby authorized to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain by way of con, of conformatory taking, to the extent not already owned by the Town of Mansfield, the following described properties or easements and/or temporary construction easements, as indicated below, for the use as a recreational trail and underground sewer lines, included but not limited to construction, drainage, utility, access, and/or related purposes in, on, or under parcels of land abutting or near Fruit Street and Harding Lane and other parcels of land shown on plans entitled Plan and Profile of Rail Trail Extension in the Town of Norton and Mansfield Bristol County Preliminary Right-of-Way Plans, dated January 24, 2018, and prepared by Beta Incorporated, in, on, or under parcels of land abutting and/or near the Mansfield Municipal Airport, and other parcels of land approximately, shown on plans entitled Plan and Profile of the Rail Trail Extension in the Town of Norton and Mansfield Bristol County Preliminary Right-of-Way Plans dated January 24, 2018, and prepared by Beta Incorporated, for use as an airport, recreational trail, recreational trail parking, and other trail-related purposes, and maintenance operation, repair, and reconstruction of the existing underground sewer interceptor line, that the use of said land through the Select Board be authorized for recreational sewer purposes, and further that the Select Board be authorized to enter into in any and all agreements, and to take any and all actions necessary to appropriate, to effectuate the foregoing transaction as follows, for three parcels, 34-415, 34-115, and 36-15.
So moved. Okay, motion, Article Eighteen has been made and moved and approved by the Select Board. Questions and comments from the House on Article Eighteen? Seeing none, we'll put Article Eighteen to a vote. This'll require a two-thirds vote, so let me see. Show of hands, all those in favor of Article Eighteen? All those opposed? I declare the two-thirds vote, and it passes. Let's go to Nineteen.
Article Nineteen. Move that the Mansfield Select Board be hereby authorized to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain, a perpetual stormwater easement, described and identified in that plan entitled The Chocolate Factory Drainage and Access Easement Plan, EAS-1, dated September 22, 2020, and prepared by Allen &amp; Major Associates Incorporated, which easements shall be accessible to and used by the Town/Grantees for purposes of draining stormwater runoff and maintaining any new drainage systems installed by the grantor, and to allow the Town/Grantees to drain any stormwater/rainwater which may accumulate in any public way abutting or adjacent to the Chocolate Factory property, onto the property of the Chocolate Factory located at 150 Oakland Street, Mansfield, Massachusetts.
So moved. Article Nineteen has been moved and approved by the Select Board. Questions and comments from the House on Article Nineteen? Seeing none, let's put Nineteen to a vote. I'm gonna call for a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Nineteen? Thank you. All those opposed? Article Nineteen passes by a two-thirds. And ladies and gentlemen, I thank you all for your attendance today. We've come to the end of our warrant, and this town meeting is dissolved.
Thank you.
We'll see you again in the spring.